Hey.
Hey, hey, hey.
You might want one of these. That's his contract and the, uh, the, uh, letter from James Vincent.
Oh, thank you, very much. Hello. Hello.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello.
What do I know again?
Nothing.
Are you officially retired? Retired, retired. Are you officially retired? Retired. Yeah, kind of. Now, if they screw my social security, now I'm gonna have to go back to work. Shh. I know, it scares me, they keep talking about it. I basically started to come over when it comes to age, okay? No, Jim, they will not take you back into the military.
Not even the special forces?
Not even close. Christ, I couldn't pass the PT test, what are you talking about? I tell you, I know I do miss it. There it is.
All the non-mongers in the council committee are ordered. To the Father, please look after this government body and give them the guidance to make correct decisions in the operation of the city government. And we ask that you give them wisdom and guidance. We also ask that you look after all those that are fighting illnesses. And we ask this in Jesus' name, amen. Pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which Spain is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our couple members, Gary Scott, President, Terry Lott, President, or Kevin, President, St. Patrick, President, Mr. President. Body in the focus section, have anything to say?
Yes, sir. My name's Joshua Ferguson. Not sure if the city council knows about the contract that Tim was under that is... They recently got the letter that was sent out May twenty-second. Wanting payment for his contract. As long as everyone, it has a contract in it, it has the letter from James Vincent, the sheriff. It has also the link to my website that actually has an audio saying he does not have a contract with him, in fact, he does.
So your response to that, Mr. Ferguson, I've got a letter from our attorney, KLC attorney. KLC attorney says there is no city exposure to this. KRS one-five-point-four-one-zero to one-five-point-five-one-zero is for original recruitment of an officer only. In that, in that, in that thing, it says, "City and county law enforcement agencies, including sheriff's officers may ask the condition of employment, requiring a newly appointed deputy sheriff or police officer who will participate in the Detective Law Enforcement Foundation Fund Program, authorized by KRS one-five-point-four-one-zero to one-five-point-five-one-zero to enter in an employment contract for a period of no longer than five years, from the date of graduation to Department Criminal Justice Training. Other training approved, let's take it on for the council." So that's the KRS. It only, it only pertains to original employment, and original employment only. That contract is null and void. It has no purpose, it has no meaning, it has no justice with the city of Muldrew. We did not sign a contract, we do not owe the Evanson County Sheriff's Department twenty-nine thousand dollars. We are not gonna pay the Evanson County Sheriff's Department twenty-nine thousand dollars. We will take it, our attorney will write him a letter for response, and that's the way it's gonna be, there is no contract, Mr. Jackson.
All right, also eight other things. There was also, you stated to Anastasia and the, uh, being messenger that you did a full background check on, which never happened.
Yes, it did happen.
You never contacted them.
Yes, I did, Mr. Ferguson, I did contact Mr. Mr. Evanson County, and I did contact the Greta County Sheriff's Department, yes, I did.
All right.
Anybody else have anything for public forum? I'll close the public forum. Any irregular outbursts from the public from this point forward will be asked for removal. You all have a copy of the minutes, the regular monthly meeting on May the twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Got a motion by Mr. Kelly to accept the minutes from May the twelfth, got a second by Mr. Heber. All in favor, sign a bye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Sharon's here now also, thank you Sharon. Sorry, we started a little bit, but you're fine. You also got meeting for the special meeting on May the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Understood the motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Noon to accept this special meeting on May the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Got a second by Ms. Hodge. All in favor, sign a bye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Departmental reports, please, pardon.
Um, we had a total of thirty-eight calls in the month of May. Uh, we had four accidents, we worked, we had zero arrests. Uh, as far as citations go, we did have six verbal, non-written, uh, warnings that I did myself. We have one domestic call, which was handled, uh, more of a civil issue. We did have a theft, uh, that Meade County Sheriff's Department assisted us in, with myself and the detective that handled that case, we actually, we had four businesses that had broke into all within twenty-four hours, as well as two in Radcliffe, that was solved, he was arrested that morning. Uh, we worked very coherently together and done all that stuff, as well as the money returned to the laundromat. Uh, and he has since been charged, my understanding he's still in the, um, Meade County Detention Center. But a total, including those six, ten traffic stops, um, and that is it, as far as cases go.
I would say thank you, Tim, and thank Mr. Detective Pace for your all's work on that, that was solved very quickly. Uh, within twenty-four hours, that gentleman was behind bars and faces several charges.
And he was, he was involved in multiple...
He actually lived here, yeah, he actually lived here, it was Golden Manor, the laundromat, the smoke shop, and budget car sales.
That's where he get up?
Yes, and two in Radcliffe the same night. Um, started about four o'clock in the morning, he just went grabbing, snatching, grabbing, we did a college. Um, we worked pretty much seamlessly from the first call coming in. I think he ended up getting charged with thirteen different felonies.
Anybody have any questions for the Police Department at the present time? Thank you, Tim. Fire department activity for the month of May, uh, we had twenty runs for the month of May, year-to-date, one-nineteen. Uh, eight AMS assists, uh, one automobile fire, one stretch of fire here locally. Uh, three accidents, uh, zero alarm calls, four assisting other agencies, and three storm related calls. Uh, stretch of fire here in town was a electrical fire, uh, with minimal damage. Uh, did not use a drop of water to extinguish that. We saved a whole bunch of stuff inside that lady's house. Uh, so it was a very good response, quick response, and, uh, thank all the guys for what they did there, so. We went through, I wasn't here last month, of course. Uh, we got our annual, our temporary annual ten-year ISO inspection. Uh, that is what your insurance is rated off of, it's an insurance safety organization. Uh, your homeowners is based off how well your fire department is equipped and trained to do their job. Uh, that was very extensive, it took about a month and a half to two months to compile a bunch of information. Uh, the gentleman is actually from Corbin, Indiana, that did our inspection. Uh, was very pleased with our, our department, very pleased with the equipment that we have, very pleased with the training that we conduct, and the way we do our, uh, asset management, as far as hydrants, pipelines, bricklaying, hose maintenance, truck maintenance, and the whole nine yards, so. Uh, we will get that response in about another month and a half. Uh, if we're not satisfied, we've got a little bit of a time to appeal a rating. Uh, right now, our department is rated a three, uh, we're the only three rating in the county. Uh, we're also the smallest department in the county. So, uh, hopefully, he seems very confident that that rating is probably gonna stay the same. For a local homeowner, it doesn't mean a whole bunch. Uh, you get to commercial property, it means quite a bit. So, uh, as soon as that rating comes out, I advise you all what it's gonna be, and then I will go from there. Any questions for that department? Thank you. Uh, Cogan enforcement is not here. Uh, she's taking care of some personal situation, so she's been out of the loop here for just a little bit, so. Uh, hopefully, she'll be back as soon as she can, so, she's got some personal matters going on. Public works.
For the month of May, we purchased two million, twenty-five thousand gallons of drinking water, and we pumped four million, five hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred gallons of wastewater for treatment, range hood was six-point-zero-four inches. Collection, no issues, distribution, one-point-one, Walker Road, we're in the process of replacing a meter setter. A setter is what we screwed the meter to, uh. So, for, for whatever reason, a brass flush valve was broke off of the residential side of the setter. So to make the repair, we will not have to shut off the whole street, we will have to find the corporation stop, which is a ball valve located at the main. So, we'll dig down, we'll find it, we'll shut it off, we'll make the repairs, it won't have, there won't be any interruption with anybody on Walker Road.
Little update on some KIA money, that two chapters there on the wall. The generator process, we're waiting on LGNE, the generator's set, the transfer switch is set. Uh, we had paid for the portion of the material, we generated the transfer switch, and sometime, we've already paid for that portion of it. Uh, we're waiting LGNE's response to insert a gas line and a meter look. Uh, once that's done, that, that station will be, have a backup generator at that station, that's the only one that does not have a backup generator at it, so. Uh, that's our main station at Sunset Street, so that will be done, hopefully. It's a long process with, with, uh, little gas and electric, trying to get, trying to get some things done. Uh, we just, for the mercy of the devil, we're now, so. The, uh, station at the ballpark will be in operation here soon, uh, with the development of the apartment complex that's going on now. Uh, if you all looked at any of that, they're about two stories tall right now with framing. Uh, they were setting some seal plates and setting some subflooring, uh, Friday, uh, for the third floor. So, they've gone vertical pretty quick. Uh, the gentleman told me that, uh, they was hoping to have that done by sometime October, no better. So that station will be operational at the ballpark, it'll boost flow about, about four-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute. Uh, both the stations have got expansions built into that to make that work. When we increase the horse main to four knots, we put a eight-inch horse main in, so that's no, that's no problem, we can exhaust about eighteen hundred down a minute if you could. So, it should be no, it should be no problem, so. Any questions for public works? Okay, thanks Nathan, appreciate it, sir. You all have got a copy of my budget proposal? Or you got a copy of my budget message? For twenty-five, twenty-six. Contrary to popular belief floating around Muldrew, the city of Muldrew is in very well financial good standing. We're not broke, by no means. Have not been broke for seven years. Uh, got more money in accounts now than we probably ever had in a long time. So, uh, there's my budget message to you all, and then you all got a copy of the proposed budget, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six.
We just had our audit done, and he said everything was great.
You bet two of them back to back?
It looked great.
Absolutely.
And not the same one, the guy from the state who said that...
Yes, that everybody...
We were the most big place in cities will be, we stayed at...
Sure, absolutely. So contrary to popular belief and rumor control in this community, we are not broke. So, uh, there's a proposal, there's a proposal, is there any discussion?
I think we need to go ahead and have the first reading.
Is that a motion, or...
Yes. I'd like to motion to have the first reading.
Got a motion on the floor by Mr. Kelly to have the first reading of ordinance number three-nine-four, ordinance adopting the annual budget fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-five, to June thirty, of twenty twenty-six. Make this second, please. Got a second by Gary. Do a roll call vote, Sharon.
Yes.
Gary. Carrie.
Yes.
Curtis, yes. Jim.
Yeah.
Mr. Noon.
Yes.
Motion carries, all in favor. And that hits on you for the first reading.
City of Muldrew, Kentucky, ordinance number three-nine-four, is an ordinance of the city of Muldrew, Kentucky, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirty of twenty twenty-six, by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message had been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council has reviewed such budget proposal and made necessary modifications. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Muldrew, Kentucky, that the beginning balance for general fund was eighty-five thousand dollars. Revenue is five-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety dollars. Total revenue would be six-thousand-six-hundred-seven-six-hundred-thousand-seven dollars. Oh gosh, I always do this.
Six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand.
There you go, six-hundred-and-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety dollars. And appropriations are five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. And the ending fund balance would be seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-and-ten dollars, seventeen-hundred...
Seventeen-thousand-four-hundred.
Seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-and-ten dollars. Looking at numbers, I tell you, it's crazy. All right, municipal road eight, beginning balance is a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. Revenue is twenty-thousand-fifty dollars. Total revenue is a hundred-and-thirty-thousand-fifty dollars. Appropriations are eighty-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Ending fund balance is forty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Land development, beginning balance, seventy-two-thousand dollars. Revenue is zero. Total revenue is seventy-two-thousand dollars. Appropriations are twenty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-four dollars. Ending fund balance is forty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Special, our police special account, beginning balance was six-hundred dollars. Revenue is four-hundred dollars. Total revenue is a thousand dollars. Appropriations a thousand dollars. Ending fund balance is zero. City festival, beginning balance is eighteen-hundred dollars. Revenue is zero. Total revenue eighteen-hundred dollars. Appropriations eighteen-hundred dollars. Ending fund balance zero. Water and sewer revenue fund, beginning balance is seventy-thousand dollars. Revenue is six-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Total revenue is seven-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. Seven-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Appropriations are seven-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Ending balance is zero. Operations and maintenance fund, beginning balance is two-twenty-thousand dollars. Revenue is six-hundred-six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Total revenue is six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Appropriation is six-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty dollars. Ending fund balance is thirty-eight-thousand-twenty dollars. Bond and interest sinking fund, beginning balance is thirty-five-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Revenue is thirty-nine-thousand-fourty dollars. Total revenue is seventy-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty dollars. Appropriations are thirty-three-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Ending fund balance is forty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty dollars. Depreciation fund, beginning balance thirty-one-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Revenue is eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Total revenue thirty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Appropriations are zero. Ending fund balance are thirty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Sewer surcharge fund, beginning balance was fifty-thousand dollars. Revenue twenty-seven-thousand-thirty dollars. Total revenue is seventy-seven-thousand-thirty dollars. Appropriations are forty-thousand dollars. Ending fund balance is thirty-seven-thousand-thirty dollars. Sewer infiltration fund, beginning balance is twenty-eight-thousand dollars. Revenue is twenty-three-thousand dollars. Total revenue is fifty-one-thousand dollars. Appropriations are fifty-thousand dollars. Ending balance, fund balance is one-thousand. Meter deposit fund, beginning balance is sixty-nine-thousand dollars. Revenue is seven-thousand dollars. Total revenue is seventy-six-thousand dollars. Appropriations ten-thousand dollars. Ending fund balance sixty-six-thousand dollars. Water and sewer construction fund, beginning balance one-thousand dollars. Revenue is zero. Total revenue one-thousand dollars. Appropriation zero. Ending fund balance is one-thousand dollars. Muldrew Construction Fund, beginning balance is one-thousand dollars. Revenue is zero. Total revenue one-thousand dollars. Appropriations zero. Ending fund balance one-thousand dollars. Stormwater management, beginning balance forty-four-thousand dollars. Revenue is zero. Total revenue is forty-four-thousand dollars. Appropriations twenty-thousand dollars. Ending fund balance twenty-four-thousand dollars. Section two, reading and limited, read at a meeting of the Muldrew City Council on June ninth, two thousand twenty-five. And it's signed, it will be signed by me and, uh, the mayor.
So you all have heard the first reading of ordinance number three-nine-four, ordinance adopting an annual operating budget for the fiscal year for the city of Muldrew on July one, twenty twenty-five, to June thirty, of twenty twenty-six. Get a motion to accept the first reading?
I'm ready to motion.
Motion by Mr. Kelly? Got a second by Ms. Hodge? Do a roll call vote. Ms. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Lichten?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Heber?
Yes.
Mr. Noon?
Yes.
All in favor? All. You can have this decision, motion carries. We'll get with you all, we'll have a second reading, uh, pretty soon, we need to have this done by the end of May. Mr. Jackson, your, your policy, sir?
So we are adopting as official, um, actually went into effect on May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, for Body One Camera through Kentucky League of Cities, as well as KECO, air for the Muldrew Police Department. Um, this policy was implemented on June ninth, twenty twenty-five. The review date to start it was actually May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. The purpose, the purpose of this policy is to direct officers and supervisors in the proper use of maintenance and Body One video recorders, BMB, as well as directing how the video will be utilized as quality mechanism and evidence. The policy, the policy of the part, of this department and office is to provide officers with Body One video cam, video recording devices, and in effect, to collect evidence used in prosecution and those who violate the law. Officer evaluation, training, and provide accurate documentation due to law enforcement, citizen interaction. Procedure, this is the intent of the policy, that all officers who are being used in the Body One video equipment shall be trained on how to use, and shall be tested, maintained and used, and how recorded events properly documented and maintained in evidence in future judicial proceedings. It shall be the responsibility of each individual, each officer to test the Body One camera before each shift. Um, the equipment and beginning of each tour of duty. Officer equip Body One cam, Body One video camera. Ensure that the batteries are charged prior to beginning of each shift or special event. The equipment is found to be faulty or functioning, there will be a backup video camera to use, or they shall let dispatch know. The officer shall report the problem immediately to their supervisor, and the information will be documented and all arrangements made for repair. Uniform officers shall be assigned to Body One video camera, will wear them at all times while on duty, in any type of uniform, as well as off-duty uniform. Body One video will be worn according to the times while on duty in any type, uh, uniform, I just said that, sorry about that. Body One will be worn according to the manufacturer's specifications and owner's recommendations. Also, officers will make every reasonable effort to ensure the Body One video recording equipment is capturing the events, positioning, and adjusting the body, the BWV, to record the event. Officers are authorized to utilize the Body One video recorders during law enforcement events when the officer is a party as conversation. Um, policy, second part of that policy, A, officers shall activate body cameras when receiving a call of service and prior to arrival of the scene, a self-initiated response. Example, backing up another officer. Is the policy of the agency to record the audio and video in the following incidents? All calls for service in which citizen contact is made. All traffic stops, all citizen transports, excluding line-alongs, all investigatory, investigatory stops, all folk pursuits. Examples of these incidents include, but are not limited to, any rest of a person, searches of any kind, seizure of evidence, processing of evidence, requesting for consent to search, random warnings, and response for incustly suspects, statements made by citizens or suspects, canine searches of vehicles, incidents of written violations arriving at law enforcement events for and/or citizen contacts initiated by the officers. Other incidents the officers reasonably believe should be recorded by law and enforcement purposes. The recording shall continue until the law enforcement event or citizen contact is completed and a citizen involved departs, or until the officer who is recording the event through BWV discontinues participation in the law enforcement event or citizen contact by leaving the scene. In the event an officer deems necessary to stop the recording, he shall make a verbal statement of their intent to stop the recording and the reason. When a BWV recording is entered into property and evidence storage, the management area of the agency, it should be done according to existing agency policy governing retention of evidence. In an officer-assigned BWV, equipment participates in law enforcement event or citizen contact, becomes aware that the event was not recorded using the BWV equipment, the officer shall notify their supervisor that the stop was not recorded, and shall notify of the reasons. The notification to the supervisor shall be in writing, and shall be forwarded through a chain of command. Issues related to the privacy, the BMB shall not be activated when the officer is on break or otherwise engaged in personal activities, or when the officer is in a location with a reasonable expectation of privacy, such as a restroom or locker room. For the safety and confidentiality reasons encountered with undercover officers, her confidential informants shall not be recorded. Undercover contacts and plainclothes contacts are exempt from this policy, where utilizing a camera may create a dangerous situation, otherwise diminish the investigative success of the operation. BWV activation is limited to situations involving, involving official police activities authorized by law enforcement, law or court order, including consensual citizen encounters and investigation of law violations. The intentional activation of BWVs during personal conversations between two officers and between officers and supervisors involved in counseling, guiding sessions, or personal evaluation is prohibited by this policy unless all parties present and agree to be recorded. Supervisory responsibility takes and otherwise stored material. The original digital files from the Body One camera recorder will be downloaded and stored in designated storage locations to prevent destruction. Officers will make every reasonable attempt to download the video files prior to the end of each shift. Non-evident evidentiary video and audio recordings will be maintained on designated storage location according to KRS and/or applicable records of attention schedule of their recreation. This media will be subject to the same restrictions and chain of evidence safeguards as detailed in the agent's evidence control procedures. Media will be released to other, to another criminal justice agency for trial or other reason by having a duplicate copy made. All recording media, digital images, and audio recordings are the property of this agency. Disammon, dis, dis, destination outside the agency other than for court proceedings is strictly prohibited without specific authorization of the agency head or dis... is strictly prohibited without specific alterations of the agency head or designated. To prevent damage to or alteration of original recorded media, it shall not be copied, viewed, or otherwise inserted to any device not approved by the WP, BWV Technical Forensic Media Stat. Unauthorized and malicious destruction, adding or deleting video, audio files are prohibited. All digital he- all digital video and audio files are subject to open rest of request, followed by Kentucky law recordings that are subject to, of denied open request must be maintained until this view between the agency and the person or entity requesting the recordings is resolved. Digital media from the BWV shall be stored on a secured server, access limited to supervisory personnel designated by the chief or the sheriff. At least once every sixty-day period, supervisors shall review and take advantage of each other or each officer. The supervisor will document their review in the officer's name. Supervisors shall use the, these reviews as a quality and control measure. Following such a review, the supervisor will hold a meeting with the officer and provide the officer with either positive reinforcement or constructive criticism with respect to abinate activity review. Constructive criticism may be relate to officer's safety issues, demeanor, policy issues, or legal issues related to the stop as well as any other supervisory observations relative to performance. In cases of infractions, the agency head, his or her designated, shall determine the proper disciplinary or corrective action. Use of body one video recordings as evidence in criminal or motor vehicle prosecutions. When an officer makes a recording of any action covered by this policy and a citation is issued or an arrest is made, the officer shall note the uniform citation that a video has been made. Where there is any indication that the body one video may contain braiding material or any other information, that recording must be saved and turned over to the prosecutor assigned to the case in accordance with the duty to disclose policy and carry as policy of this department. Civilians shall not be allowed to review recordings as approved by the sheriff, chief of police, or their designated through the process of evidentiary discovery and or proper public records request. Special considerations, school resource officers recording in schools and or educational facilities, video, audio captured by an SRO indicates a number of privacy issues related to juvenile. An SRO should not release any audio, video recordings to school personnel. All requests for audio, video recordings captured by an SRO will be submitted to custodial records. The custodian of records will not release proper, without a proper review, legal authority, carry as chapter six hundred, six forty-five.
You all heard the description of body and video recording policy for the local police department. Any discussion on that? Can I get a motion to accept the policy for the police department?
I'm making a motion to accept.
Got a motion by Ms. Hodge?
I'll take it.
Got a second by Mr. Noon. All in favor, sign a bye. Oppose like sign. She carries. Okay, so we've got a couple appointments for planning and zoning. Need to reappoint Janet Kelly and then Juliana Moore as excepted position on planning and zoning also. So that bring this up to five total members that, that board now, which is a good even number for us. You always want to odd number, so you don't have any issues. So I just need a motion to reappoint Janet Kelly and accept Juliana Moore to planning and zoning. So she lived in Mr. Tolbert's house on Main Street right across from you?
Oh, I know.
And then she moved up to Main Street.
I know where she chill.
Chill.
That's why I was.
Yeah. Got a motion by Carrie to accept. Ms. Kelly and Ms. Moore, get a second please. Got a second by Ms. Sharon. All in favor, sign a bye. Oppose like sign. Motion carries.
Any other question?
Yes.
What's going on with their election? Are they having one?
So once they get staffed, like they are now. Now we'll go to continue on with the SOPs that design.
So that is online?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So. Okay. So council members, do you all have any comments? Sharon? Gary? Carrie? We're going to get to these here in just a minute, so.
Yeah, not yet.
Okay, Curtis? Jim? Mr. Noon? Okay, I've got a couple comments. So guidelines for meetings for the city of Muldrew. Since how again, we're plastered because we're doing things illegally, we are not. City council meetings, regular city council meetings are set forth by city ordinance. Date, time, and location is set forth by city ordinance. Those do not have to be publicized on the door. It's already set forth by city ordinance. When the city ordinance has been adopted, there it is. Special meetings have to be publicized, twenty-four hour notification prior to the special meeting. To correct that issue. So. The other thing I have is what you all see in front of you is some iPads. From this meeting forward, all information will be sent electronically to all council members. Any correspondence from the mayor's office, city clerk's office will be sent forth to an iPad that you all have in front of you. In front of you, you have a post-it note that's got a password, a wifi name, and a user password. That wifi and user password is for this building as a secure username and password. Carrie will talk to you a little bit about how to set some of your stuff up. I mean, most people is familiar with iPad. You got an iPhone, iPad, same thing. It's just a little bigger version. If you've got spectrum internet at your house or you get a random telephone company at your house, whatever you have for a TV provider, those two, you have a wifi modem in your house. On your modem, you have a username and a password. You need to, when you get that, you need to go to your settings, click up wifi connection and enter that username and password so you have wifi connectivity on your iPads at your house. Once you say that, it will automatically connect. It'll automatically connect to this building when you come in. And then you'll have your correspondence here on an iPad. I think it's a little more user friendly. It takes away the, the paper trail and stuff. We lease a copier, so everything we print, everything we copy costs us money. When we get over to a certain amount, it starts ballooning at a rate. And we do that for the purpose of, copy machines aren't cheap. And when they break, they just come fix, break you another. You don't have to try to go find you another thirty thousand, twenty thousand dollar copy machine. This is not your ordinary day old copier that you got at your house. We've got the business industrial copy machine. So that would take down some of the copying off our machine, take down some of our cost when we can send things electronically. So you all got a charger, you all got an iPad, and you all got a password for this building. When you get to the house, look up your password for your internet and go to your settings. Carrie can tell you a little bit about what's going on. Each one of these is set up for each one of you. It's listed by council member name and, or council member number. So just whatever number you've got is what council member number you are. It's not product specific. It's not anybody just randomly picked. We just picked some numbers and there it was. You all can, you all can send messages back and forth. You know, we worked on ordinances back and forth. You've got discussion, you can send messages back and forth. You're not in the presence of a meeting when you ask questions. So. Carrie talked to you a little bit about how, how this is going to operate, how you turn it on, how you set up your, I mean, most of you got iPhones, correct? Got Android?
But you know how to turn them on.
So I've got Android too.
I hate iPhones.
It's taken me a little bit to get to it and I, I figured it out real quick. I spent, when I was at the hospital, I answered a whole bunch of stuff through, through the emails, so.
I am, do you have a, I mean, the schools use Google.
Sure, 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 sure. So pretty explanatory. I don't know if all of the chargers, you have to charge them, make sure the charging cables work.
Should be charged.
And then every apartment has got one, every council member's got one.
Fire.
And then I've got my personal one, so. Yes.
The emails for everybody are already in there, all of, I mean, they are populated. We try to write an email, so you don't have to put in anything. It should be literally all right there.
You have any problems going, Carrie, can you send them out?
It's a, it's a Gmail, it's a Gmail account. Your email is a Gmail account, which is the simplest, simplest email account to use. So it's pre-populated, the password's pre-populated. All you got to do is pretty much make sure you got connectivity at your house. You go, there it is.
And it's through Apple Mail, so you just look for the envelope, you hit the envelope and it's right there and you can just, you just put a Muldrew on it, it'll come up like fire, public works. One of the council members, I'll, I'll, when we turn them all on, I'll show you and you'll kind of start seeing what it looks like and I can do this. I made it so you didn't have to do anything other than send an email. I know.
It.
I tried to make it as simple as possible, I really did.
I've been kind of wanting this for a year or so. We was lucky enough to acquire some. These iPads are no cost to the city of Muldrew. We acquired them and here they are. There was a gift. So it's no cost to us other than some covers and some charging cables is all we had to buy. And we bought all that stuff from Amazon. So we didn't go to Apple, we didn't go to Apple Store and buy anything through Apple, so we bought everything from Amazon. So.
And you have to have cables and order to charge them, so I mean, it was necessary to be able.
Right. So anybody got any questions on that right now? It's, it's, it's.
It's easy.
It's twenty twenty-five, but.
If you can use your phone.
If you can turn your cell phone on and you can send an email and you can operate an iPad.
It's just a big phone.
It's all of this.
Just don't be walking around like this, Curtis.
Only thing we ask is you do not download a bunch of stuff on it that's going to get you in trouble.
Personal, yeah. No personal stuff on.
No personal stuff on iPad.
Because this can be taken and used as evidence.
Right. This belongs in the city of Muldrew. It's all city property. So.
So nothing personal.
Use it for city use and yes, go from there. So. Anybody have anything else? Motion to adjourn. Got a motion by Carrie?
Second.
Second by Curtis. All in favor, sign a bye. Oppose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. We'll have a meeting, we'll send out a notification for the second reading here.
Well, we don't know where, but I show you little babies. You little babies.
What are you talking about?
You had a.